The. Thank you.
We entered the meeting password, all of my pounds.
Okay, so if everyone needs to go ahead and make sure you mute yourself unless you're a city council person, but we're calling this meeting for the April Clarkson City Council Meeting to Order. I am Mayor Beverly H. Burks, and I'm very happy to call this meeting to order. At this time, we'll do roll call. Vice Mayor Yasu.
Present.
Councilman Carol. Councilwoman Johnson. We got with council people. Councilwoman Hopkins. And Councilwoman Bill.
Present.
Councilwoman Hood.
Present.
And I see Councilwoman Hopkins.
Present.
Okay, let's see if Councilwoman Johnson joined. Yeah. We don't see her yet, but I know she'll probably join momentarily. So with that being said, we'll go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. So, I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we take note of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move to add a discussion of the Fresh Harvest Memo of Understanding.
Okay, well, we're gonna do that now, or we're gonna wait so that we can have a discussion with the work session so that the community could be involved too?
Okay. So for next meeting, okay.
Okay, so with that, yes.
I think we would like to remove an agenda item. Is that an order?
There is an agenda item, which, thank you, Vice Mayor Yasu, it should be new business under item eight B needs to be deferred.
Yes, so I just want to move and defer that until next, oh, or should we do it when we get there? I'm not sure. I just wanna know.
Well, we can go ahead and move to accept the agenda and defer item eight B.
Yes, that that will be my motion.
Okay, so go ahead and make the motion.
I move that we defer item eight B until next work session.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that we approve the agenda and defer item eight B until next meeting, work session? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Okay, motion carried. Now we'll move into administrative business presentation with the approval of the two one twenty twenty city council meeting minutes and the three twenty nine twenty twenty work session meeting, work session minutes. Is there a motion for these items? Can you see?
Yes, I'm, I move to accept the minutes.
For, and we stay reading.
Yep, February first, city council meeting of two thousand twenty-two and work session meetings, minutes for meeting on March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty.
I second.
There's a second, thank you, it's been properly moved and second that we approve the city council meeting minutes for February twenty twenty-two and the work session minutes for work session, March twenty ninth. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion pass. Thank you all. We'll now proceed into reports with the Planning Economic Development Report, followed by the City Managers' Report. Entering center interim city manager, Ms. Calwee.
Thank you, Mayor Burke. The Planning Economic Development Department. The Planning and Zoning Board Meeting will be held on April the nineteenth for a conditional use permit request. That conditional use permit request was deferred until the April nineteenth meeting for forty-three twenty East Pomposilion Avenue for a place of assembly, for a place of worship. It was deferred based on the non-attendance of the applicant. Um, congratulations to the City of Clarkson for being accepted into the Georgia Economic Place Making Collaborative. It is a two-year process, and the Georgia Municipal Association and the Georgia City Foundation named Clarkson as one of their collaborators. We're extremely excited about this collaboration, and along with the Economic Development Coordinator, we submitted this grant, and we are again excited about our participation. So those who are on our collaborative list, please be on the lookout for email to be on our team, and we're excited again about this process. Again, congratulations to the City of Clarkson. The Georgia State University awarded the City of Clarkson a fifteen hundred dollar grant to promote vaccine awareness, in which the mayor and city council will glamorize themselves, I hope, in the future, and participate in this very informative video that we will have for our residents. In February of twenty twenty-two, Clarkson's vaccine rate was twenty percent higher than any comparable neighborhood in DeKalb County, and it was eight percent higher in the, for the state average for the state of Georgia. So again, we're excited about our efforts, continue to do great work, mayor and city council, and we will continue to support you on that. And that is the end of the Planning Economic Development Report by Mayor. City Managers' Report. Again, we wanted to thank mayor and city council again for their diligence on March the twenty-sixth for our COVID at-home test distribution event. Every council member participated, so we're very excited that at the stations that we had located, you all were there in participation. Not to single anyone out, but I think I saw Councilwoman Hood work extremely hard from corner to corner on that stage, and we are excited about her effort. So thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hood. Also, we wanted to continue to make our residents and our business owners aware that the City of Clarkson does have temporary assistance funding that is available for you, and temporary assistance is available for business assistance, mortgage assistance, utility assistance, we have the COVID quarantine relief assistance, and of course, again, our distribution efforts for our COVID at-home tests. We do have sign-up efforts online that are there for you, and/or you may also contact our office. The city manager's office is here and available for you. Feel free to email or call our office anytime. We will receive your messages as well, and we will return them in a timely matter. I know that some may have seen the substation work by Georgia Power. It is located next to ten fifty-five Roland Street, and they're underway to upgrade their substation so that we, as well as the residents of the City of Clarkson, can obtain their utilities in a faster, a faster rate as we were told. So we're excited about that. There is a tree that is on the property that we are looking at that may be compromised that is on our parcel of land, as well as the Georgia Power parcel as well. So we're reviewing that with them as well. And the city's website, the new website is up and running. And again, we're excited about that transition as well. And if you have not gone to our website, clarkstongeorgia.gov, please go and visit our website. We understand that the transition may not be what those who have looked, it's not in the same look, so please go visit it. It launched on March the twenty-eighth, and some information that you may be familiar with is broader. So please, go visit our website and tell us what you think about it. So we're here for you, and we would appreciate your feedback. And Madam Mayor, I think that is the economic, the city managers' report, but I just wanted to make one little disclaimer on the side that we're here. The city manager's office in the City of Clarkson is here to assist you in any and every need that you may have. Please feel free to contact our office, call us, and email. I'm available for you and your needs. The transition from prior leadership may have left us with staff that is working hard and diligently to make sure that our efforts are taken care of, and we understand that sometimes during the transition, some information may get lost in translation. But again, we're here for you and for your efforts, so please, contact our office if you need anything. We are here for you, and thank you to mayor and city council for their support. That ends my report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Calwee. Any questions for our city manager? Okay, hearing none, we'll then proceed with our city attorney's report. Mr. Quinn.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I just have a quick report. At the work session last week, I was asked to investigate Georgia law and regulations in terms of whether a gas station could legally allow customers to self-dispense the gasoline while no employee was on duty. The answer is no. The, the Georgia Fire Commissioner regulates gas stations, including self-service stations which require a special permit, and one of the rules is that the employee attendant must have a line of sight to the pump at all times that customers dispense their own fuel. So again, Georgia law and regulation will not allow that business practice. That's all I've got.
Well, thank you for, Mr. Quinn, for that update and educating not only the council but the community. There any other questions for Mr. Quinn at this time? Hearing none, we'll proceed with the council remarks, starting with Vice Mayor Yasu.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have attended the two events that were pretty much where everybody attended as well. First one was on the twenty-fourth of March. I attended the Daffodil Project Annual Tree, I mean Flower Planting Event. And also on the twenty-sixth, just like our interim city manager said, I attended the test kit distribution at the Clarkson Community Center. And those were the two events that I just wanna report. Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilman Carol.
Yes, I also attended those two events, the Daffodil Planning. I'd like to especially thank the World Refugee Center for putting that in on. It was very touching, remembrance of all the children that are lost in the Holocaust, and it's a reminder for us to try to make sure that nothing like that can ever happen again. And I also attended the Test Distribution Center with the other council members and appreciate all the council members and volunteers and staff that helped make that happen. I know a lot of people came by and got free COVID tests. I think that was good then. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, and then Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Vice Mayor and Jamie said, I did also attend those two events, the Daffodil Project Event and the COVID Test Kit Distribution, as well as on the March the twenty-third, twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth, myself, interim city manager Calwee, as well as the Economic Development Coordinator, Assistant VCOF, which is the Veterans, the Veterans Group here in Clarkson, in actually putting those test kits together. So I wanted to let, give them their recognition. They came out and they made sure that every test kit was assembled, and they didn't come in one or two. They came in four, five, six people at a time, so I want to thank them for their service. And I also attended a joint committee meeting on March the twenty-eighth with Public, what is it, Public Safety, Housing Infrastructure, and Community Development. And I had an item for a approval of a lounge that was not voted on. It was a mere discussion, and I wanted to, I did get some inquiries about it. We wanted to see what our community wanted or did not want, so we didn't, didn't get the turnout that we thought we would, so we will be going on to next steps. Everyone that's wanting to be a part of this event can take place, but we're trying to see if our city would like a lounge in the area. And we also have a food drive on Saturday, April ninth, at the Tahoe Village Shopping Center. Everyone is invited, and all council members are invited to work, of course, and I'll just look forward to everyone coming and enjoying the festivities. I love it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson, and Councilwoman Hopkins.
Um, I would just like to say I will probably get a lot more exercise at the food drive on April ninth than I did get distributing the COVID tests. It is not mine and YT's fault that we got a corner where no cars stopped. I think we passed out about nine tests that day, but I did take the opportunity to get to know a lot of the veterans that were also out there helping pass out the possibly nine tests that we passed out at our particular location. And also attended the Daffodil Project dedication in Friendship Forest. I'm, I'm just gonna have to say this, I think the city manager heard me say this, but I think whenever we think about the speeches that were given, because there was an actual Holocaust survivor there who lost his whole family, were extremely moving, extremely difficult to hear, especially when you think about how these things affect children. But it's always something that other people have done, never something that we have done. But I think we have to remember that we also had something similar to the Holocaust on our shores, and nothing could be more representative of that than displacing the indigenous flora and replacing it with European flora. And so I would be very happy to volunteer myself to come out and relocate daffodils to a more appropriate place in the city, because that park was set aside for a wildlife preserve of indigenous flora and fauna. So I'm just putting that out there, because I think we do need to remember that very few of us on this council are actually indigenous to this land, and we do need to remember what people went through that this happened as well. Um, that's my comments.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Hopkins, and Councilwoman Bill.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. March was a busy month as it relates to working for the resident. I met with the students that attend Tucker Elementary, but they live in the City of Clarkson, and they want to conduct the project in Clarkson. I'll provide updates as soon as they're provided, but I know we did discuss them potentially utilizing Mollin Park to address the heat. Um, I also want to thank Roberta for connecting me with Selena of Refugee Women's Network as we've been to recruit youth to the Youth Advisory Council and trying to get them to sign up and trying to brainstorm that process. I also attended the COVID nineteen kit dissemination, as well as the annual City of Daffodils annual planning ceremony with the other colleagues. And I also attended the Congolese leaders and community partners had an event also on March twenty-sixth, where they were disseminating Pampers, food boxes, and COVID nineteen vaccines. And I also want to thank all the organizers, volunteers, and community leaders that assisted with the passage of the resolution that I introduced to expand language access last month, and I just want to provide an update that I've been in communication with members of the CAB Board of Elections and Voter Registration, and so hopefully it will be on the upcoming agenda for discussion, so we can continue to move at four and hopefully expand language access on the ballot. I also attended Coffee and Donuts, the pop-up event at Brockett, hosted by the Clarkson Police Department on March twenty-fifth. And with the help of Chief Hudson, had a great conversation with Chief Parrish from Gainesville about how to, how he incorporated social workers in his department since twenty-twenty, and how it's been a great benefit for him and his department, and actually addressing issues individuals they come in contact with, that come to jail while they're in the facility, as well as when they resuscitate back into the community, to do separation back into the jail system. As it relates to, in addition to that, I also was recently added to the Georgia Municipal Association Municipal Government and Community Development Policy Committee, where I hope to learn and share with other local elected officials across the state of Georgia and assist with setting the legislative agenda for GMA to prioritize what is happening in our cities at the state capitol during next year's session, since yesterday was finally died, the last day of legislative session. And a point of personal privilege and just awareness, I just want to say, check on your neighbors. There are a few individuals that are going through, a lot of individuals, quite frankly, but only a few that reached out to me that are going through hardships and difficult times in the community, and I just want to say, like, as an elected official, I'm just like you. I too am in trials and through hardship, and went on a constant journey learning how to cope with those things in this moment. As a woman that raised me, my grandmother died on February first, two weeks before her birthday, but I still showed up for the council meeting, and I'm still going through a few issues right now, so just reminding people to, that I'm just like you, but hopefully sharing my story, letting them know that whatever you're going through, or if you know someone that's going through something, there's hope on the other side, and there's power in community, so don't forget to check up on your neighbor. And that's my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bill. Councilwoman Hood.
Yes, thank you. Councilwoman Bill, thank you for sharing your story and urging us to reach out to our neighbors. Like other council members have said, I attended the testing giveaway, and thank you to the interim city manager for giving me a shout-out, but I must say that I was only trying to keep up with Councilmember Johnson's husband, Count, who was out there rocking and rolling in that intersection and getting the job done. So also, as others have said, I was quite moved by the daffodil ceremony, and one of the things that I learned was the reason the daffodil was chosen is that the petals are reminiscent of the yellow stars that Jews in Germany were required to wear. I will never look at daffodils the same way again, and not only in our city, but anywhere. So I am pleased that they are, that Clarkson is part, partnering with them to continue to plant these in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll do the mayor's report, and as mentioned, participated with the daffodil ceremony, as well as the COVID giveaways. I also participated with my fellow female mayors of DeKalb County, where we celebrated International Women's Day to get together, and we talked about striking down the biases, and it was a wonderful opportunity to see female leadership that was in DeKalb County. I attended the call with the DeKalb representatives, where we talked about some of the upcoming issues that they were facing in the legislative session. I also met and continue my meetings with the Senator Ossoff State Director, and we're always making sure that we do our quarterly meetings between her and Senator Warnock's offices, so they are very in tune with Clarkson and the needs of Clarkson, so I'm very happy to say that. As well as I attended a meeting with Senator Ossoff, as he talked about his willingness to support Judge Jackson for the Supreme Court. So that was a wonderful thing to hear about him and what, where he stands in his position with that. I attended the Asian American Pacific Islanders Break the Silence, remembering what happened last year in terms of the deaths of, of, of many of the Asian people who, not in Atlanta, but also what was happening throughout the country. So I was able to attend that and show support from Clarkson. I attended and spoke at Freedom Middle School, where the girls had their love conference, and so I was able to talk about that and making sure that we emphasized, especially for our girls, self-love, and so I was happy to work with them. I attended the Clarkson Coalition for Vaccines and Diseases, where they're looking to have the health fair as they did last year, again, in either July or August, so you'll hear more about information about that. I also attended the Quarterly Coalition of Refugee Resettlement Agency Meetings and made sure in terms of our presence, I was there for that. I participated in the Joint Committee, as well with Councilwoman Bill, Councilwoman Johnson, and Councilman Carol. I also attended the State of the City of Atlanta's address with Mayor Dixon, and as he talked about some of the things that they plan to do in Atlanta. So what happens in Atlanta impacts all of metro area, including DeKalb County. And I also want to take a point of personal privilege to make sure, to bring up about one of our community members. Some of you may or may not know that John Beck passed away this weekend, and he was my cancer warrior. Both of us had cancer, and you know, we were supportive of, of him through his time, but John was an advocate for this city, and I wanted to make sure that we always remember those people who take the time to make sure that we're on the right path with what we're doing with the city, and that was something that John did from his heart. And so with that, just make sure to make, as Councilwoman Bill mentioned, to make sure you check on people. You never know what someone's going through, right? And John was a warrior, as so many who, like, who've gone through the struggle and living with cancer and going through cancer have, but you never know what someone's struggle is, and it's so important that as a community, we come together and galvanize each other and be there to support each other. So keep that in your mind, keep him and his family in your prayers, be there for everybody, because you never know what someone is going through, how they may be feeling, and just the mere fact of you saying hello and giving someone a smile could make the difference in someone's life. So as Councilwoman Bill, Councilwoman Johnson reminded us, we have the food drive on Saturday, but I also want to remind people that we do have our waterway cleanup on Saturday as well at Friendship Forest from nine, it's starting at nine PM. So it's gonna be a busy Saturday, but we want to make sure that you see and know that your mayor and council are here for you. And so with that, and I also want to say just to Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hood, she also was a champion for John, her and Jan Riley, so appreciate everything that we do, and, and so you see us here on the screen, but we do so much more in the community than you could ever know, and that's what makes us a great council. So with that, we will now proceed to public comments. Madam Mayor. Any member of the pub, yes?
I just want to clarify, the waterway cleanup, it doesn't start at nine PM at night, does it? I think that.
Well, nine AM. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm just clarifying that. I heard PM, I'm like, whoa, we're gonna get some bright lights out there and have a nighttime cleanup. That would be fun, though. Little dark, dangerous, but it would be fun.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. So with that being said, we'll go into public comments. Member of the pub, public mayor addressed the council during the time allotted for public comment. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments at the discretion of the presiding officer. The public comment period will be limited to forty minutes, and is not a time for dialogue. If your public comment contains a series of questions, we submit those to the city clerk in writing. This will facilitate follow-up by the council or staff. The city council desires to allow an opportunity for public The city council desires to allow an opportunity for public comment. However, the business of the city must proceed in an orderly, timely manner. With that, Ms. Cowie, did we have anyone signed up for public comments?
Um, we had one resident, Madam Mayor, that was Mr. Brian Metford.
Mr. Metford.
Evening, everybody. All right, last week, there was a joint team held combining three sects. This is an interesting format. Can't remember such combined meeting being held in the past. First, from the outside, it appears to have included most members of the council and the mayor. According to Georgia law and our city charter, this constitutes a quorum, considered a council meeting, subject to different laws than our standing advisory committees. Second, it would appear that no citizen members of any of the committees were present. For some committees, this is due to there being no actual citizen members, but that's a separate issue that also needs to be resolved. On three thirty-one, I submitted an open records request for a video of the meeting that was held. A prompt response was sent, closing the request stating that no video existed. I immediately submitted a second open record request for any and all materials pertaining to the meeting, including emails, presentations, materials, et cetera. At five PM today, the three business day ORR deadline expired with no response from the city from my second open record request. This is a violation of the Open Records Act. Last week's joint meeting was referenced during the work session as being very constructive. And yet the non-attending public will never know what was discussed outside of the sparse meeting agenda found online. If the ca- council is going to focus on pushing items to the committees for discussion. Then there must be higher record keeping accountability at the committee level. Lastly, if the point of the standing action committees is to get community input. Then having meetings without citizen members defeats the whole purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Metford, for your comments. Ms. Cowie, do we have anyone else?
No additional speakers.
Okay, thank, thank you so much. And now we'll go ahead and move on to old business, which is the approval of the cost estimate from the selected firm Volter. For the Splot Zero Nine Professional Engineering Services for the Mel Avenue Crossing. Multi-leg Intersection Safety and Organizational Improvement Projects. Ms. Cowie.
That is it, Madam Mayor. This is to approve a cost estimate in the amount of four hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. Staff did recommend to conditionally approve a contract with Volker Incorporated. In the amount of four hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. Staff will release only two hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-two cents to perform task one. The concept phase of this project. Madam Mayor.
Okay, with that being said, I will entertain a motion from the council and then we can proceed with discussion from that point. Any council member at this time?
I move that we approve, um, that.
Yes, Vice, uh, Councilman, Councilman John, uh, Councilman Carol.
Okay, I move that we approve the cost estimate from Volker Inc. for this lost or nine professional engineering services for the Mel Avenue Crossing.
A second. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that we approve. And Councilman Carol, say your motion again, because I couldn't, I couldn't hear part of it.
Okay, sorry, we pull back that part of PDF again. Okay, I move that we approve the cost estimate from the selected firm of Volker Inc. for this lost oh-nine professional engineering services. The Mel Avenue Crossing Multi-leg Intersection Safety and Operational Improvements Project.
Okay, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. Correct, correct. So it's been properly moved and seconded that we, uh, approve the cost estimates from the selected firm Volter. For the Splot Zero Nine, uh, Professional Engineering Services for Mel Avenue Crossing Multi-leg Intersection Safety and Operational Improvement Projects. Is there any further discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion pass. And next we have the consent agenda. As we've approved the agenda as a whole, we will now go into the consent agenda. Just for the public, when we had the work session, these are the items that the council agreed. That we were going to go ahead in unison to vote on and did not require additional, uh, discussion. So at this time, I will look for a motion to per- approve the consent agenda with the items listed from A through E.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved, seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion pass. Thank you all. So we'll move on to new business. And as you know, we only have two items. Um, we'll move with the first item, which is the approval of an alcohol license for GoPuff. DBA GB License LLC located, located at eight oh eight Park North Boulevard, Clarkston, Georgia. Twenty-three zero zero two one. Ms. Cowie.
Yes, the, um, applicant, um, known as GB Licenses LLC. Doing business at GoPuff, a retail delivery shop, has applied for an alcohol license. For a retail delivery shop to sell and deliver beer, wine, and malt beverages. The location to be considered for this alcohol beverage license is eight zero eight Park North Boulevard. Of course, located in the city of Clarkston, Georgia, three zero zero two one. The new owner of the GoPuff Retail and Delivery Shop, um, has met all required inspections and they have been performed. And the required background checks have passed. The city's code compliance officer has reviewed the application and has measured the location and found it does meet the minimum distance. Distances as defined by the code. Per section three dash five eight, new licenses are permitted for certain designated businesses, including a retail delivery shop. They, as the Alcohol Review Committee has performed a thorough review of the various components of this application. And under Clarkson Code dash three, under Clarkson Code three dash five three. The city council is vested with the final authority to grant an alcohol license. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Cowie. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on this item for us to then have discussion.
Yes, I move that, um, we approve an alcohol license for GoPuff DBA GB License. Located at eight oh eight Park North Boulevard.
There, second. Okay, it's been properly moved, seconded that we approve an alcohol license for GoPuff DBA GB License. Located at eight oh eight Park North Boulevard. Are you, is there any discussion on this item? Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Well, I have, um, mentioned my concern, uh, not really specifically for the agenda item per se. But I really have a concern about, um, the fact that we have a moratorium in, 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 in place. Uh, for new, uh, alcohol, um, by package, uh, locations, um, I mean brick and mortar locations. While we're allowing the delivery, uh, which basically is not different. The product is the same. It's just this, this, uh, organi- this company is going to deliver it. So I strongly think, consider whether we have to either consider, um, revol- I mean, um. Taking away that moratorium and, uh, I mean, removing the ban and, uh, allowing new brick and mortar as well. Or we cannot be allowing, you know, picking and choosing, um, delivery or not. And, um, so I just want to throw this out there. Maybe in the future, we should consider, uh, revoking the, the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for your comments. Are there any other comments from the council at this time? Hearing none, are you ready for the question? All in favor of the motion to grant GoPuff the alcohol license? Say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Thank you. The motion passed and thank everyone for that. The next item, which is the approval of the change order number forty-four for Splot Zero Four B and C. Roland Street Road Diet Project, paving of Hill Street. Ms. Cowie.
This is a request to add the milling, resurfacing, and striping back into the project scope of the Splot Oh Four B and C Roland Street. Road Diet Project as a change order. The striping work will include a double yellow line, center line striping, and I think, Madam Mayor, that was our discussion at our work session. Um, city council did remove Hill Street from this project in, in early twenty twenty-one. And the scope of work in the bid package included resetting the granite curb, asphalt, milling. Resurfacing and striping for angled parking on the east side of Hill Street in a raised landscape median. I think the information that you requested before, um, Madam Mayor, you have received it. The change order quoted for number forty-four is in the amount of forty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty. The concern that you, um, you and council discussed was, um, the striping issue. So, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I think at that time, when we finished the discussion, it was that we just simply paved the, the road and not deal with the striping at this time. So with that, with that being said, I will entertain a motion from the council on this item and then we can have any additional discussion.
Uh, I move that we add the milling and resurfacing of Hill Street to be approved, but not any striping of either parking or middle stripe at this time.
Nice second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been properly moved, the second that we approve the milling and the ass. What, what was the part that you said? I want to make sure we got it right.
Milling. What I said.
The what?
Milling and resurfacing.
Milling and resurfacing of Hill Street and not the striping. There's discussion. So Councilwoman Hood and then Vice Mary Yasu.
Yes, um, as I recall, we had requested to see a design of that. Uh, because we had a lengthy discussion about striping, parking, et cetera. So, um. I'm assuming we will get that, you know, sooner rather than later and then can make a decision about what, uh, should be there. Um, my only concern about paving at this point would be if the idea of some sort of planted. Uh. Area in the middle of the street, which was removed time ago. If that is at all in play in the new design, then perhaps we shouldn't consider planting it now. However, if we are not, I mean, paving, milling, and repaving it now.
I want to go take a shower, girl.
I'm sorry.
Uh, make sure everyone mute your phone. Thank, mute, thank you.
However, if, if that is off the table, then, uh, I can certainly support this. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Mary Yasu, you had your hand raised?
Yes, so, uh, I was, um, so since we removed the, um, the, the striping parts, um. I'm just curious, uh, on the motion, whether we have to indicate the total amount of money. Because the total on the agenda packet is forty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. That includes, um, I, uh, on, if you go on the, uh, I mean, uh, detailed descri- description of the, 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 the whole, uh, breakdown. It includes about, uh, five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, um, that it was for striping. So should we, uh, also indicate the exact amount of, um, money, which will be, which should have been forty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy?
Correct.
Correct. So if you would like to amend the motion, we can amend the motion, um, to include the forty-three thousand, nine hundred. And then we'll vote on that and then go back and vote on the original motion. Um, before you do that, let's take a question from Councilwoman Hopkins. And then if you would like to proceed that way, we'll go ahead with the amendment to the motion. Councilwoman Hopkins.
I just wanted to comment on Councilwoman Hood's comment about the, uh, boulevard area being removed. And that was very deliberately removed. And that's why I was, um, a little upset at being brought, brought back up in the work session. And being put back on after the council had voted to remove it. So I don't think there is any serious discussion of the boulevard being brought back. Because that would completely eliminate all public parking in that area, which, uh, gives people access to the path for the bicycles. And the city buildings and events, both at the community center and, uh, like the coffee truck. Thank you.
Thank you. And before, I'll let Councilwoman Bell and then Council, Councilman Carol.
Be quick, Councilwoman Carol. I know you're going to jump in there. Um, so Vice Mayor Yasu brought up a great point. Around the updated pricing for this proposal. And so I want to know from either, um, interim city manager Cowie or Mr. Kaiser. Have any of these prices went up to reduce any changes in any orders?
Councilwoman, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I want to make sure that these prices that you have listed here in the detail for this agenda item, where it gives a description, uh, right under the items. Are these the most recent costs for each item? Um, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Bell. And Councilman Carol.
And it just addressed what Councilwoman Hood said. Councilwoman Hood said, I mean, in the past, I did support the median being put there. And if we put a median there, I believe, and Larry Kaiser can correctly form wrong in this, but it would just require the parking to be parallel, not diagonal. So it would be what we're considering anyways, which would making the slightly fewer parking spots and they'd be parallel, wouldn't eliminate them entirely. And I do think the median would be pretty and it'd also be nice for pedestrians to have somewhere between. But, you know, if the council, last time, it didn't seem like the council supported it. So if there's been a change and the council now wants a median, I would be on board. But the council doesn't want a median, then I think the next best thing to do is to repave the street.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Carol. Councilwoman Hood.
Yes, uh, final question here. Mr. Kaiser, can you give us an idea of when you might have, uh, various options for that? Street so that we could move quickly from having this work done to getting it stripped?
Within one week, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Okay, and then Mr. Kaiser, um, and interim city manager, uh, Ms. Cowie. We kind of also said to make sure that you involve the community around the area in terms of the design. And making sure that we put forth the effort to make sure that everybody knows about this. Because for that community, they have been through restructuring and everything else for the last three to four years. And that is a lot for a community to have to go through. And so we have to be extremely mindful of that as we're communicating, which I know you do. But just making sure that we really make sure those residents know, um, because they've had some concerns. And we want to make sure that we let them know we've heard their concerns, we're making sure that they're included. Making sure that they're aware of all these changes that are happening. So I want to thank you, Mr. Kaiser, for continuously doing that and making sure that the community is involved. Councilwoman Bell.
So one last point to that, um, Mayor. Uh, can we all agree that letters will be sent to each of the households that are around this street? I know we mentioned in the work session, but I want to make sure it's clear so everybody knows, uh, and so people are aware. And if they have any questions, they can reach out to, to the admin, ask those questions, as well as Mr. Kaiser involving them in the design process. So that when you bring it back forth to us, it has included the, the community and we can agree to disagree or have discussions about the design that the community wants.
Thank you for that piece too as well.
Um, while, um, Councilwoman Bell, that we have, um, decided to once again have another public, um, information meeting. Um, while, um, Councilwoman Bell, that we have um, decided to once again have another public um, information meeting for those that live on Rogers, um, in reference to the chicane and, and what they desire for that. Um, we can add this item as well to that agenda for discussion for public comment. And the letter.
Sorry.
We will make sure that all residents. So they will be very much informed on when this meeting will happen and take place.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kaz, did you have something else?
Yes, just one comment. Uh, when we add Hill Street to the conversation regarding eh, with Rogers Street, the chicane being removed, et cetera. Um, there are a number of um, striping possibilities for parking uh, along uh, Hill Street. I assume council and mayor would like me to provide those at any kind of public meeting that we have to show that there is some opportunities to put both parallel as well as angled parking on both sides of Hill Street with no median being planned, uh, it appears in the near future. Uh, and so would you like me to provide alternatives to that public meeting regarding striping possibilities for parking on Hill Street?
I think that's. Say only if you include the opportunity to not have parking striping, as we've had for so many years. As an option.
I'm sorry, uh, my, my, my computer went out, Councilwoman, sorry.
I said if you include the option and of not putting striping parking at all, as we've had for so many years, as one of the options. You said either parallel or angled, which did not give the option of like straight out, but also not having striping at all, which is what it's been for years, and from what I can tell, without incident.
That is up to, that's up to city council and mayor.
Okay, so council, do you want the options to show um, parallel versus angle? I think the biggest thing, uh, Ms. Uh, Mr. Mr. Kaiser and Ms. Cowie, is that the council wants to make sure we get the maximum amount of parking available and the safest way to do that.
And again, as an engineer, I'm going to, if, uh, if parking is going to be allowed, if it is, if it is, uh, then it's going to have to show something down the center of that road, which we talked about before.
Okay, all right. With that being said, I still need to have an amendment to the motion. Um. Have an amendment to the motion uh, regarding the amount, and then we'll vote on that amendment and then vote on the main motion. So Vice Mary Yasu, did you want to, oh, Councilman Carol.
I have one more question. Since we're going back to the citizens, I think on this, I mean, if we do the resurfacing, the milling, will that prevent us from doing a median later if it turns out what the residents had here? In.
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, all right. Vice Mayor Yasu.
I mean, uh, if Councilmember Carol wants to uh, amend it, that'll be better, I would say, uh, but if not, I can do it as well.
I can amend.
The amount is forty-three thousand and nine hundred and seventy.
Okay, I can, I can amend it to account for that. And so I amend my motion to approve the milling and resurfacing of Hill Street in the amount of forty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy, without including any funds for striping either for parking spots or for striping down the middle of Hill Street.
Okay, so this has been seconded, it's been moved and seconded that we, we gotta do the forty-three thousand without any funds for, forty-three thousand, nine hundred and how much?
Seventy.
Seventy, okay, thank you. Forty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy for the milling and surf- resurfacing of Hill Street without any striping. So we need to take care of the forty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy without any restriping. Vote on that first, and go back and vote on the original motion. So are you ready for the question?
I'm confused.
Now, because what happened was the original motion was to approve uh, the milling and resurfacing of Hill Street. What Councilman Carol added was the forty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy without the striping. So what you do is you amend the amount that he said without the striping. Then I'll go back once we approve that, and I'll say we approve the milling and resurfacing of Hill Street with the forty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy without the striping. Okay, are you ready for the question? So we're dealing with the uh, forty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy without the striping. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Thank you. That piece was moved, properly moved and passed. Well, next vote on the resurfacing and milling of Hill Street with the amount of forty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy without striping. Is it, are you ready for the question? All in favor of the motion to repave and resurface Hill Street with forty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy without the striping, say aye.
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 Any, any, any abstentions? Anyone opposed? Motion passed. Okay. So for the record, we have where we are resurfacing and milling Hill Street at forty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy without the striping. Just want to make sure we're clear on that. With that being said, that was the last item. I will have a motion to adjourn the meeting. Vice Mayor Yasu, you put that hand up so fast.
Motion to adjourn.
Is it, is it properly moved, the second that we moved to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passed, and we'll see you Saturday. Take care. Thank you, everyone.
Take care.
Thank you.